Super Hit, 1049 WAXI, Rockville-Clinton.
Well, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. The first item on tonight's meeting is election of officers. So at this time, I will ask for nominations for the president of Marshall Town Council.
Hi, nominee, Kevin Stewart.
You can't, I mean, I'm not gonna say, you know, this is...
Do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nobody's seconded to take that job.
I don't know. I'll accept nominations for vice president. I will second that.
I was gonna hurry up and call you.
Any other nominations? With that being asked, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else we have to do along that line of salaries?
So you wanna do this now, or versus get that out of the way?
Yes. Can you say these are the same as they were last year?
And we hit up the water operator last year, town clerk, and upped the town marshal.
Right. Each year, we're required to approve these salaries in January.
So my, like, still upped, um, the state has...
We don't have any now.
I know, but just in case.
I didn't look and see. I didn't, because the last year, I didn't.
Somebody...
We had forty-four cents.
Forty-four cents? What did you say?
A mile.
Mile.
Oh, that's not what I was about to say.
So we meant we don't ever do anything.
Also, I remember that subcontract worth thirteen dollars an hour, where you get to work thirteen dollars an hour.
Jason. Most times, it's just going...
That's saying much, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we just gave last year, which is the ones who got raises, with you.
Well, there are no changes. Accept the motion to approve.
Pat said, whatever you want to say.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, under old business, I have had a chance today to talk to Steve Brock about the water rate study. It's still not completed. He has assured me that he has worked on it, but it's not done. So he hopes to have that to us in January. I don't know what else we can or should do in light of waiting on him.
But can you, can you?
No. We were to have a wastewater meeting tomorrow, and it has been canceled. But along those lines, we have a contract here through those series of meetings. Wesler Engineering was chosen as the engineering firm to work with this group for a PER. And what I have, what Cindy has brought to us tonight, is the actual contract to be signed. And is there anything you want to say, Cindy?
I would say how that particular contract was designed, that each town individually is signing the contract with Wesler for the PER. And then part of the discussion going forward, which Kevin's probably shared, is to talk about what that entity would look like going forward if something were to be formed. So this is strictly just all three towns signing for the PER.
And the PER is funded through a portion from the commissioners and a portion is through...
The Indiana Finance Authority.
Okay, IFA. So none of the towns are out of pocket.
Okay.
None of them are out of pocket.
Right. So we're pushing forward to have quite a bit taken care of this spring towards this. So the funding that's coming to Indiana, or that has come to Indiana from Washington is, I think we've got our eyes set on that as a group, that that funding will be used to help, if we approve and get through this, to fund such a project.
Is it that where the funds are, like, cavaled or something, for some of them, they start getting...
Yeah. Do you remember the dates? Was it April we had to, it had to be completed at PER?
That was, the hope is to have the draft in early April. With the illness is kind of pushing us up against that. But really, application time is July.
Okay.
For USDA, so we have a little cushion, but we've just got to be very diligent once we get...
Okay.
Wesler is the engineering firm, but they also have brought the Rockville engineer on board with that because that person knows that system and will help walk through that, the engineering part of that.
Which is who?
Excuse me?
Which is who?
Deckard.
Oh, Deckard.
Yeah, I believe Dylan talked about that in the last meeting, when he came, when he came.
Correct.
He was saying that they were going to be partnered with them since they knew the system.
So that should expedite some of that work, since the person's already familiar with the town of Rockville.
Well, since he's done a lot of the work there, it's nice that they both work together since...
As I say, UMAC attending our sessions, I say, UMAC's attending our sessions too, as the operator site and land knowledge.
Yeah, the group has grown quite a bit with state agencies and, like you said, UMAC is part of it, just all the different entities. Now, DNR sent three people last time. So there's a lot of interest that is being generated in the discussion portion of it, to see where we're going ahead. So with this being said, and the contract agreement would be the last of the players here to sign, are you in favor of signing this contract with Wesler? Cindy, is there anything else you want to speak about on this, or anything else for the town of Marshall? Or you've got here?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to repeat things that you've probably shared, but I think just from my perspective, it is that, and please forgive me if I'm repeating things you've shared.
That's fine.
You know, USDA has a great interest in seeing a succeed to the project. Not only from the perspective of, you know, as a funding agency, but they've really taken the kind of stance for their office to look at the distressed communities across Indiana and making sure that they're focusing, helping, trying to help those communities as best they can. We are not one of those distressed communities. But because we have been working so hard, you know, the town of Marshall's made multiple inquiries and trying to take this forward. We've done the regional approach at one point. They understand how serious, serious we are in making this happen. So we have, their full support. We've had, like Kevin said, the attendance around the table has grown, if nothing more, that they're not decision makers, but they want to lend their support and be there to provide guidance. The other entity that we're going to bring into this conversation is a rural council for water, I mean, water utilities in general. Acronym is RAP. And they really help communities setting policy, especially when you're consolidating towns and townships and various things, trying to make one utility out. So those are folks that have that kind of experience, expertise, that will be there to help guide through those conversations, which are difficult for us to have on our own, just because we don't, we've asked questions several times. So who else has done this well? So they'll be able to help us with those questions as well. And Steve Brock, you know, will be engaged from the rate perspective. And, yeah, we've got a lot of great support in conversation going. So, you know, if we can make the numbers work, and they dealt with very clear with those agencies in our last meeting, is this is all well and good, and we can design a fantastic project, but you as the state have to help us make the numbers work. And not just the state, but all the funding agencies.
I think one of the big concerns early on here is going to be making decisions on how the group operates. Because we have really three town board presidents that make up the voting body. Everybody else is a resource, giving advice, participation from an outside perspective. Even the county commissioners are in that role. So how that entity's going to look in the very near future, as decisions have to be made on that. So that's one of the big things that we were going to talk about tomorrow, and then it's been postponed. But, yeah, that's concerning, because right now, all three of us have to come together, all three of us have to sign for that agreement.
That's Rockville, Bloomingdale, and Marshall.
Right. And everybody else is a participant, DNR, for example. They're there to lend their support and their ears and their voice if they have opinions.
Because they're just going to cuss.
Correct, yes. Yeah, they have voiced that they do not want to be in the wastewater treatment business, period.
Questions are the money to pay.
Well, that's a, that's a good question.
I mean, that's where it boils down. If you want out, you're gonna have to pay.
Yeah.
So I'll just say, I'll just share, interestingly enough, you know, we kind of posed that question subtly to them in the last meeting, and their comment was, in other communities that they've had to do these projects, the state has provided funding through the finance authority and paid the full amount of things, but they're working in communities that have existing systems. So it was a matter of paying for connecting the park to an existing system.
To an existing one, yeah.
So this is a little diff, I mean, a lot different, in which there's not an existing system. So how much they'll bring to the table? And we've posed to them repeatedly, they're gonna have to bring a lot, you know, for the rates to be at a point where it makes sense to pursue. So that's why we're having that conversation early. The other thing that the RAP group will help us with is public support and education. So I know probably the folks in the room here have heard us multiple times just talking about why there's such a great need from a health and safety perspective. So they'll be able to help with whatever it is that they do to help with those education and gaining public support and sharing that. So we've got some additional resources, and so trying to figure this out on our own.
Well, that's what it sounds like. So basically, that group that you've talked about, they will end up and help you guys too, with like the, like you said, the policies and help with, kind of helping you out with your decision-making, with the three of you, so that way if one kind of gets heads with the other, maybe can try to see how to...
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, because the DNR has a collection system.
Right.
And Rockville has a collection system. And then you have Bloomingdale Marshall sitting out here that do not.
In the middle of it all.
And if you have one entity making decisions, it's going to affect the other two.
Right.
And then DNR is a player, because there has to be a connection point with DNR. And that was part of our discussion here a few weeks ago, was is that point at the old plant, or is it in somewhere on the property, or is it at the property line with, you know, the state of Indiana, the highway? Those are the things we've kicked around, and those are unknowns for sure. No decisions have been made.
Okay. No, it all sounds good. And like you said, I mean, it sounds like you've got the players in place, people to help you with your decisions.
Yes.
What decisions, to make sure that there's things that you don't think about, that they know from their experience?
Yes.
That's a, that's a bonus.
Yeah, that'll be very helpful. So hopefully, we can reconvene that whole group again on another day. And it was going to be a full day. I mean, we're going to talk governments, public support, and education. And then the afternoon is going to be held on engineering. So it's pretty intense conversations. But I'm here to have other questions. I mean, I'm just really trying to help coordinate things and get signatures and make sure that we can keep this rolling and keeping USDA informed of our progress, as well as IFA. I will say this, and the funding that we received to do the PER from IFA, which I'm sure Kevin has shared with you, that we did ask each of the towns to send, sign a memorandum of understanding that they were all willing to participate. Nick actually put that together for us. And we had to produce that document with all three signatures before IFA would give us funding for the PER. So that was the thing, is that they want to make sure that all of the communities were on board before we, before they would give us the funding. Because they understand, you know, they funded our previous regional PER, which we didn't really get to take anywhere. So before they invested, they wanted to make sure that that was, that was happening, so...
So this next meeting is pretty important. And it'll be interesting to see what the advice givers tell us which way to go and how to set something like this up. Because it's, you can wrestle with it in a lot of different ways, you know. And I think Nick has voiced a little bit of an opinion, but he represents...
Two of the three.
Two of the three entities there, plus commissioners. Yeah, so, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of players here, a lot of pieces, and it will work out. I'm sure it will work out. Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for the signature, and we'll get to Dylan, and hopefully, schedule very soon.
Yeah. Does anyone have any other old business?
I think so.
Under new business, we talked...
You want to talk about that?
Yes, I dropped it into new business, because I changed directions here.
Okay.
We got the quote on lighting and connecting all the lights, but I think it was Dale's suggestion, we look maybe to RNC and see what's available. So I called and talked to Jeremy Montgomery. They do have a rebate program with their lights. It's a specific kind of unit, and we would need to buy those through Kirby Risk. Yes. The good thing is, the rebate on them is really good. Jeremy thought that a light fixture like this was like ninety dollars, but you get a fifty dollar rebate on it. So it's a forty dollar LED. He said, they're fantastic lights, they last forever.
Well, we wouldn't even, if you did LEDs, you're not going to need this many lights.
Well, that's the question. I talked to him about that. He thought we may want to stay with that, with the same number that's here. Fast forward to my conversation with the Bruce Dougherty from Kirby Risk, who happens to live over near Niceville.
I said, Ken Doodle lives out there west, probably, you know, like, by three miles.
Right. So he's going to meet me up here this week, and we're going to go through this room, that room, and then the bay at the, at the firehouse.
Firehouse.
Yes, so that we can get that taken care of. So he wanted to come look at it and then give us the opinions, as you're saying. How many lights do we need? So that's what I plan on doing, and then I'll probably come back in the next month with asking for that approval for those lights. That is all the new business I have. I know we've got claims and ongoing truths. Is there anything else you want to talk about here, before we move to that?
Was Brady going to show up tonight?
Hope not. Don't know.
That's curious.
Okay, Kathy, you got claims? Marshall Water Works, how did that break down? How did, what was that, around thirty-six thousand?
That was the money of the ARP funding that I switched over to the water.
Gotcha.
Just basically switching accounts with all those.
Okay.
Because for some reason, they put it in the town account all the time. Kind of low on payments this month, because I'll put them all on January. The ones that never went to the end of the month.
Well, you will have a UMAC bill on this drain.
I saw he did another...
Yeah, I spoke to him today. He said they're starting tomorrow on that tile, putting the tile in. I also spoke to him about putting in the no semi signs. He's agreed to put those up for us.
That one is thirty-seven-one and six cents.
Thirty-seven?
One, three thousand seventy-one and six cents. So what tile was UMAC going to put in fix?
The one down here that we had trouble with late last summer, where that gentleman's basement...
Did they spend, okay, I thought they already got it.
That was, that's the one they're on.
Totally got it, okay.
Yeah, they bought, they got the supplies in, and they're just now getting to it.
Okay. I remember talking about it, but I, like I said, I thought maybe they already fixed it.
Yeah. Tonight's plans for the town, fifty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents. And for the water department, three thousand and seventy-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Unless you had an effort.
This is, as of right now, until I started on my report, that's where our Indian balances are, finding connection. So maybe we just switch the accounts around, but... There's now a bit in the breakdown, they have all the income and expenses and...
You haven't gotten an invoice on that new gun for the...
I haven't, no, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, I had talked to him, and I know it's been ordered.
Okay.
Just a initial list?
Yeah. If I make any changes, I'll come back if they do. The reports do march the first, but... And then our water readings, we weren't doing too bad till we had that cold snap. I don't know if someone spoke out a leak, and they don't know it. They're running some water. I'll do meter readings Thursday.
We know Tyler still has a leak. He wasn't able to dig when it was quite cold, so he's...
Which he would, a lot, but...
No.
But we're running about thirty-three thousand a day, and that's high. So...
Yeah, it took a pretty good jump there on December twentieth, to the end of the year.
Of course, we had the church, but they got that one shut off.
Yeah.
And I lived down here, but we got that, that was just a short-lived. So somebody else didn't know that they've got a leak, or what? I said, I'll see what the water readings show and...
Nobody turned that back on down there, again, after I turned it off.
I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody, so not to say we know, because I've heard from her.
Tyler said, but his is still, I mean, his thing was full, so he couldn't even tell.
Yeah, his wasn't...
His meter pit is full, you can't even see it.
Yeah.
You see if a leak's on, which is like...
But when I was there, it was, it was about half full at that point in time. But theorizer he did that it was, where it connected to the old line, right outside the meter pit.
He was wanting to try to get an idea.
Put a sub pump down there, drain that out there, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I thought, no, but Jason did.
He's going to want to dig that up when he puts all that together, yeah.
But I think he was wanting to see where, kind of idea if it's right there inside where it connects, or if it's on the outside, if he gets it drained.
Because of where it's at, you know, there's probably some kind of a tile under that drive, and it probably goes down that ditch going north.
Because it's not that, it's been broke again. I mean, this is, it's happened before.
Well, he put a new line, or somebody put a new line.
Well, I think that was from the other.
Yeah, and he does have a shut-off under the house.
Yeah.
So he's good enough that he can control that piece of it. But once he had all that shut-off, and I turned it back on, it still showed meters, still...
Well, I thought Jason said, means they could hear water running. Because Jason was there before you was.
Yeah, I never heard any running.
I thought he said they could hear water running when he was there, what he told me. So, but they both heard it.
Okay.
So, that's why he says it's up to you, when you were there then.
Tyler thinks he, it's there outside the meter pit on his side. But that's where they made that connection to the old line, whatever that steel or copper, whatever it was. So he thinks that's probably what's happening. But it didn't appear to be, it wasn't moving that fast.
No, it wasn't. I mean, I think he was like, I don't know, fifteen thousand gallons or something.
Yeah.
But, so, yeah.
But I have not heard of anybody else with, with problems. Well, Jason had that leak. Did you know that?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, because he called me.
So...
So, yeah.
And they were fixing that?
And, yeah, they got that, because Brad came down and fixed that, helped him.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I haven't heard from anybody else, unless they said it'll show up. They're just not aware or something.
Right.
Where I just kind of had their water on, kind of dripping, and so they freeze some, maybe, I don't know.
See, it's still warmed up now, there shouldn't have.
Right.
It's been warm this week, whereas not necessarily, it shouldn't be tapering off.
Must be a lot, because we're dropping down to seventeen thousand gallons, or sixteen thousand gallons.
Yeah.
Now, granted, some of that's an average, because I haven't been going out every day.
I understand.
But still, overall, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're probably using, you know, an extra six thousand a day, roughly.
Well, it's so wet.
But it's not really wet. All that property across from us is dry as bone. I mean, everything's soaking in, because everything's been so dry. Now, it may not this morning, after that rain last night, but as of yesterday, before rain, I walked over to that area, and it, there wasn't anything, soapy, soggy, nothing. When Todd did all that tiling and everything, from us over there, it was dry as bone. And it would have been like...
Tiling worked.
So, and that's what he said, he said it was so dry, it's just pouring rain to the ground too. But, so...
Nick, what do you have for us?
So we had hearings on the newer ordinance violations. I've talked to two of the three. The one down here, Mr. Carver indicated, was asking what the problems were. I indicated fire pit and chickens. And he assured me he'd get that taken care of. So he's supposed to reach back to me once he's cleaned that up. And I told him I'd have, I'd see Braden go by and check it out. But he had all kinds of pictures asking what the problem was. And what I could identify in the pictures was fire pit. Like, he had just a bunch of shit piled up, and then he had chickens. So he's, he was pretty amenable to getting that taken care of. And I just said, once you have, reach back to me, and Braden can come look at it. The other one, the Amish, one of them had reached out. He said that they had people in there, they're gone now, and so in the process of getting it cleaned up... in there, they're gone now, and so in the process of getting it cleaned up. So what I did was, on those two cases, they're reset for February twenty-first. So we can see what progress is made between now and then. The other one we had, Rex Franklin, we did get service. He's deceased, as you guys know, but I assume it's a daughter. I wasn't able to attend the hearing, but one of my law partners attended the hearing, and he came back with contact information for the heir. So I haven't reached out to her, because I just got that today, but.
Okay.
It looks like we'll have somebody be able to contact now there. But we have service on all three of them, so at the very worst, we could receive a judgment if I'm not able to get a hold of them.
Right.
But she did provide all kinds of information on how to get a hold of her, so that's a good sign.
You're right. Good.
So those three seem to be progressing well. Like I said, in talking to Mr. Carver, I, I, I fully expected that one to be taken care of, so. And then, I'm not sure, I think it's Emmanuel, I talked to out of the Kings.
Mm-hmm.
And said that the people are out and that they're taking care of everything.
Yeah, I've been by there, and they've cleaned up that mess that was back behind the house.
I told him to come back and see me when he thought he had it well, but the main thing is, I wanted to give him gates to work towards, so.
Right.
So those are the three things that really I had development-wise on ordinances. I haven't done anything further on the corner store, because they were making progress.
They were there again today, they have worked on.
Okay. So I've been kind of leaving. I've been leaving that one alone, because they seem to be doing things, so.
Yes.
But the other three, I, I think we'll get those resolved, hopefully.
Where do we stand on the one on North Main? He was in jail.
Oh, I mean, Billy.
I don't know.
Because I thought he served him in jail.
Yeah, he did.
Wait, was he in jail, or was he still there or not?
I, I don't think he is.
Houston? That was a small claim, so, right? Or he's, because I, the only thing I had for him pending was the small claims. So he served an ordinance violation on him?
We didn't have small claims on him.
Maybe they mistitled it on the CCS then, okay.
I, I think it was an ordinance violation on that abandoned house.
And the tall grass and everything?
Yeah.
Let me look at it real quick.
Well, supposedly according to Kathy and Matt here, Billy had got the title of that house, and I thought, was that house under contract or something?
He, he did.
It, it did show that he had it under contract.
I'll have to go look at that, I, I'm not showing that.
I didn't think he had that contract paid off when I was.
Right.
I was told he did.
Oh, really?
I was told he, that he did, well, I think that.
Brian said that.
He may have had a little bit left to pay on it, that's what I think.
I don't think so, Brian.
I don't show anything pending on that, but I'll, I'll go look at that and see. I'm sure we've probably got something going on it, so.
Because I thought he, I thought he went serving when he was in jail, is what I thought he did with it.
Yes, he did.
All right, I'll check on it then. If he's served him, that means we drafted something at some point, or had he just served him the initial complaint of ordinance violation? Because if that's all he's got served, that explains why I don't have.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can get with Braden on that and figure out what's going on there, but. But the other three, I think we're going to get resolved, it sounds promising anyway, at least two of the three. And I'll call her back this week on Mr. Franklin and see where we can get.
At least one of them, it's, it's going to be ongoing. We have, I mean, it has been for years, and I think it will continue.
Yeah. At least we have contact and service, though, so that's a, that's a lot better than where we were, so.
Exactly.
Did we get, have we gotten anywhere, or where else on getting this sidewalk paid for?
No, I haven't.
That's just basically anything that passed.
Uh, no, I need to work on that.
Yeah, because we paid for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I think we have a small claims petition drafted, or a civil suit drafted, but I need to check on status on it. Because you guys gave me authority to file, so.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where we're on it, but we have two years to file on it, so we're not outside our deadline anyways.
Anything else there?
That's it.
Tom?
Yeah, we're good.
Survived the holidays?
It was tough, but he'll make it.
Yeah, that's, surprised the cold weather, that, that's, that's the one survival.
Yeah.
But I don't think we had any horrible stories on our water system during that time.
I was afraid of it. It's my phone, but I was like, no. But no, I didn't get anything until Christmas days, or first month following up.
Is that right?
Well, I did have one call and asked me if I, or texted me and said, did you turn my water off? I'm thinking, do you think I'm, I'm beating the water off on that Friday? No? It's like, I think you got frozen pipes.
You have anything for us tonight, Kathy?
Nope. You took care of everything.
Anyone else board, have anything?
So how are their water rears? Are they being caught up, the rears payment on the water?
I have one that I'm probably going to get with Jason and get them shut off here if I don't see anything in the next week or two, and the others have made payments, so they did what they said they were going to do, so.
Well, I, I apologize to you, Kathy.
I know, but.
You're still on that, but.
I know.
I really want to hammer that.
I know, but it's not in his name, so.
Well, I understand that. They buy eight-dollar boxers, they bring the damn water bill to you.
I understand.
That's how I feel about it, I'm sorry.
I understand. So I'll put another one up on the bill when it comes through.
Whose names are not?
It's in hers.
Oh.
So, and she did what she said she was going to do, so. But, yeah.
Very good. Anyone has anything else? We'll stay adjourned. Thank you.